Hey Rudolph.
Hi.
Commissioner Stewart.
Hi.
All Izzy As have it and the motion passes.
All right, and I'm gonna ask a favor of commissioners if when you so move if you would say your name, it would be helpful, okay, so and for seconds too, okay, thank you. All right, so next we have open forum, which is an opportunity for members of the public to address the planning commission on items that are not on tonight's agenda, and you can do that currently since we're on this video conference platform, you can do that by either calling or writing a letter or emailing by 2 o'clock the day of the meeting. So staff, do you have any comments for open forum tonight?
We do not here.
All right, thank you, and information on how to do that is on the Richfield website under the planning commission's agenda and minutes page. All of that, all the detail that you need is there, and you can address us on things that aren't on the agenda as I said. All right, next you have approval of, or excuse me, approval of tonight's agenda. Would someone like to make a motion?
Someone, Lavin.
Thank you. Second. All right, any discussion? All right, so Nellie, could you take a roll on approval of tonight's agenda?
Yes, thank you. Chair Kwam.
Aye.
Commissioner Hayford O'Leary.
Aye.
Commissioner Lavin.
Aye.
Commissioner.
Aye.
Commissioner Rosenberg.
Aye.
Commissioner Rudolph.
Aye.
Commissioner Stewart.
Aye.
All Izzy As have it and the motion passes.
Thanks, Nellie. We're still getting quite a bit of feedback. I don't know if anyone is on the phone, on the telephone or not muted, but I don't, I'm hearing quite a bit of background noise. So can you make sure you're muted, everybody? Commissioner Lavin? Thanks. Okay. The next item on tonight's agenda, we have two public hearings tonight. And there are three ways to address us through the public hearing. One is again by calling ahead of time and leaving either a voice message or an email, and staff will read that at the meeting, or you can call in live tonight and address us live on WebEx. And the number, do we have that information to put up at all tonight, staff? About how people can call in? Wonderful. So there's the phone number for public comments during our, either of our two public hearings, either tonight or in the future. There's some details which I will remind people of as we get closer to the public hearing, which is right now, I guess, but so again, the number 612-861-0651. You'll have up to five minutes, and I'll give you a reminder, public, if you're getting close to that, I'm gonna ask you to mute your device that you're watching the meeting on, otherwise we won't be able to hear you, we'll get all kinds of feedback. If you're representing a group, you can speak for up to 10 minutes. And what we'll do is you can give your comments or ask your questions, and staff will be gathering those questions and answer all of them after the final caller has shared their testimony. So rather than during your five minutes, it will be all collected carefully, and staff will answer everything then. So let's see, so first, the first public hearing we have is consideration of a request for variance for a driveway wider than the allowed maximum at 2015 Forest Drive. Staff, could you read your executive summary for this public hearing? Staff, can you read your executive summary?
I'm sorry, Nellie, were you, were you going to read the staff report? I think we might be having some technical difficulties here. Just give us a second.
Oh, I found it, okay. So I just need to get to my staff report to read it. Okay. Yeah, so this is a public hearing to consider a request for a variance for a driveway wider than the allowed maximum at 2015 Forest Drive. The property located at 2015 Forest Drive is in the low-density single-family residential R1 zoning district. The purpose of the requested variance is to allow a driveway that is wider than the allowable maximum width of 20 feet. In 2019, the applicant was granted a set of variances to construct a new attached garage. The variances were for a side setback requirement, a total number of allowable accessory storage buildings, and the total allowable square footage for accessory and garage space. As part of the variance application process, the contractors hired by the applicant for construction of the attached garage were notified that the maximum driveway width was 20 feet. The contractor subsequently submitted a plan that met this requirement, and plans with a conforming driveway were approved by the planning commission on July 22nd, 2019. I'm gonna pause for a second because my dog is making noise in the background. One moment, please. All right. apologies. Right, in the spring of 2020, the contractors constructed a driveway that was 25 and a half feet wide without first obtaining the required driveway permit, without meeting the previously approved site plan, and after being notified of the maximum allowable width of 20 feet. Approval of variances requires that an applicant meet five statutory findings. Of particular importance in this case is that the situation for which the variance is requested should not be one that was created by the applicant. A full discussion of the criteria for a variance is listed in the policy section on the agenda. And if finding that the criteria are not all met, staff recommends denial. And then, we did receive one public comment this evening over email from a neighbor, Andy and Shannon Taylor, who did have some concern for water runoff from snowmelt, and just were requesting that if the variance is approved, that they would want to maybe take steps to limit any unforeseen damage. And then the applicant is in the meeting. I can answer any questions.
Yeah, Melissa?
Chair Kwam, I believe that a caller was sent into the meeting. I can hear someone speaking in the background, I do not know if it is the caller.
Do we have a moderator that can remove the caller for now? Oh, that worked.
Okay, okay.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Nellie, were you done?
Yes, I'm done, thank you.
All right, thank you. There it is. I'm wondering if someone's moderating that line for us? Do you know, Melissa, if they can mute the caller?
I'm getting a message that they cannot expel the caller, so perhaps it would be best to take the testimony from this first caller, and then continue the public hearing after the caller has participated, and staff, or I'm sorry, the commission has had time to ask additional questions.
Okay, that makes sense. So caller, can you hear me?
Yeah, this is Pat Elliott, if you're talking to me.
Oh, yes, Pat, are you here for the public hearing about the driveway?
I am.
Okay, all right, great, so you probably.
I was told that there was one that was in front of me, that's, that's the only reason I'm asking if there's somebody else already waiting.
Yeah, there are two of you on there, which.
I think I was second in line.
Okay, well, I can't unmute that caller, so why don't you go ahead, Pat, and then the other, the other person that is on hold will come in after you. And then if the dashboard moderator could not let anyone else in yet, that would be great. Go ahead, Pat.
Okay.
Could you state your name and address, and, and you know the rules, I think?
Sure, sure, I'll be quick. Good evening, commission members, this is Pat Elliott, I live at 6720 Oliver Avenue South, which tees right at the end of Forest Drive. I just wanted to call in and make a couple comments in regards to the request of the Kristnicks for a variance. The entire neighborhood is, has been excited about Christine Kristnick moving back into the family house and expanding on that and turning it into a wonderful addition to the neighborhood that circles Oliver, Forest Drive, and just down from Fairwood Park. A couple things in regards to, to the list of the requirements for a variance, and I'm not taking issue with, with a lot of them, but I do want you to know that there was a neighborhood meeting where we all discussed this and talked about it, and to a person, including the Taylors, who are newest residents in our neighborhood, there was unanimity about hoping that the variance would be approved because of the addition, the Kristnick family, as well as their house makes to our neighborhood. And I do want to just make a couple comments in regards to the staff report on the application for the variance and the requirements. There's a couple misnomers in there, there's an indication that the property owner caused the circumstances and led to the variance, that's not entirely the truth. The contractor that labored six, eight months putting that house together made the mistake of not seeking the variance, or seeking, asking for the width of the driveway. So to say that, that the property owners caused it is, is not entirely true, and I wish you'd take that into consideration. And also, you talk in paragraph 2D about the variance is not in harmony with the intent of the zoning ordinance. It may be a little bit of follow that, but I can guarantee you that the aesthetics of the neighborhood, I think two of the planning commission members traveled the neighborhood. I know that either Melissa or John Stark came through the neighborhood, because if you go down Forest Drive, you'll see that that driveway, regardless of the width, is not out of character, out of line with driveways up and down Forest Drive. So I want you to keep that in consideration, that it, that not only does not detract, it adds to the aesthetics of the neighborhood, and is in compliance with just about every driveway up and down Forest Drive. So those are some considerations I'd like you to take into consideration in allowing the variance to stand. Thank you very much for your patience. Good night.
You're muted, Chair Kwam.
Thank you, Melissa. It appears to me we don't have currently another, we've got a lot of participants. I don't see that caller, the second caller still being there, so we're gonna continue.
No, they're not.
Thank you. So next, did the applicant want to add anything? The homeowners?
You're muted, Christine.
Okay, I'm gonna unmute her, this is Renato, and she's gonna join me here. We're in the same room, but two computers.
Hi all, thank you so much for having us. I'm Christine Kerznick, I grew up Christine Hendrickson, I grew up in this house, and you know, I just want to say thank you for everyone who has been working with us on this situation, but in general, we were able to get some funding to do the build, which was really an exciting part of making the house even extra special. The variance on the garage, it's just, everyone's super excited, like Pat said, about the opportunities for us to, you know, build a community here with, with the background we have as well as going forward, so thank you. I, I think the big thing that we want to share is that we really, there was no intent to go beyond the, the city permit situation. Our contractor actually thought, when they got the curb cut permit, that they were in line and conforming to, you know, putting this driveway in, and it was a day where I, you know, I wasn't out there all the time, but you know, the, the wood goes into the ground and the permit, surveyor comes over a couple times, and there's a lot of decisions made on the fly, and we all thought that we were in compliance, and we didn't find out till after that unfortunately our contractor made this mistake. And they are obviously embarrassed, they're a really good company, they did a great job with our property, they do probably 60 properties a year, so they're just big enough, but maybe small enough to miss some of the ordinances in the cities, and so they're not on the call, but they're certainly available to, to follow up with the details, but they, they missed it. And I think, secondly, I do feel the same, Pat, like as I look around the neighborhood, and I don't wanna, I want to be respectful of the grandfathering that has gone on, we've actually benefited from the grandfathering as well, but it does fit into the neighborhood, and you know, I think we got 13 signatures yesterday when we had a neighborhood get together to welcome Andy and Shannon Taylor to the neighborhood, and they did certainly share that concern as well, and we certainly said back, we will do whatever we need to do to make sure that they don't have a water issue with the houses that are a little bit close there where we got the variance. Anything else? I'm just looking at my husband now.
I think she, she said it well.
So thank you for considering, again, this additional variance to the plan, and we look forward to hopefully being in the Richfield showcase someday and meeting all of you, we appreciate it.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff from commissioners at this point? Commissioner Rudolph?
So I see staff is recommending denial of this, you recommending that they tear this driveway out?
Hi, yes, so unfortunately, that would be the solution without a variance, they'd have to remove the portion that is excess, and staff is recommending denial just based on, it doesn't meet the variance requirements.
Commissioner Lavin?
I've, I've, I don't know who on this committee has gone through and looked at, at the actual driveway in the house. You know, I, I can't tell you how disappointed I am that the city is, is recommending that this is, that this variance not be granted. This is exactly what we want and need in Richfield, are people to invest in their homes, you know, put in capital, improve their homes, improve the neighborhoods, and what happened here is not the fault of the homeowners, there wasn't anything nefarious to try and circumvent some sort of variance, and we need to have the flexibility, we need to show that we understand and can comply with the, with the residents that choose to stay here. This is gonna happen more and more when we get, hopefully, more residents staying in our community and redeveloping in their homes, and this is, this completely conforms with the neighborhood. All the neighbors, I talked to some neighbors, all the neighbors agree that there is no issue here, and for the city to come in and say, no, you have to take it out, I think is very unfortunate, and I don't think it's in the spirit of what we're trying to do comprehensively with the city and with our single, single-family neighborhoods, so you know, that's my position. I would, I would hope in the future, there would be a reasonability test that the city would apply to these variances, and that we wouldn't be in this position again to have these type of homeowners having to come above this committee for something that I see is very inconsequential. Thank you.
Commissioner Hayford O'Leary, and then Commissioner Penn, and then I would like to share.
First, I want to say, of course, I think it is great that they are, that they've invested in this neighborhood, unfortunately, I haven't had a chance to go over, it looks like they've done an amazing job, and I don't want this vote to be like a referendum, and if we think it was a good thing, of course, it was a wonderful thing, and thank you for investing in our community. And I also, I just take slight issue with Commissioner Lavin for criticizing staff, they are doing their job, we are doing our job, and we will consider this, but I'm glad for that objective recommendation on it. My question for the applicant is, have you looked into what it would take to correct this? I would assume that you could just cut off the excess, does your contractor told you you have to tear the entire thing up and start from scratch?
No, we looked into what it would take, at this point, there is a, there's a lawn that was finished, the yard that was finished up, did, we put the sprinkler system in along the side, so what it would take, it would take, taken out two and a half feet or so on each side, and, and remedying all of the other work that we've done. I think if we comply exactly to the 20 feet, I think the driveway is gonna come within the doors of the garages, because we did get a variance to widen the garage back in, I don't know, I think it was August timeframe of last year, so, so the fact that if we cut to the two and a half feet on each side, we're, we're actually, the driver comes in within the garage doors.
The crash comes in the driveway, yeah.
Okay.
Commissioner Penn?
Thank you, yeah, I drove by there today and took a look at it, and you know, I think certain situations where, you know, had this been something where, you know, there's an additional parking pad on the side of this, there is.
Oh, you froze, Commissioner.
You got me? Okay, thank you.
Yes.
If there's an additional parking pad on the side of this, you know, that I think I would have felt a little differently about this, but I mean realistically, like, that, you know, they, they have two to three feet on either side of the garage where it matches up with the side of the house. You know, I'm, I'm one for wanting to stick with the rules in this, but I'm looking at, you know, the spirit of this rule in the first place is for stormwater control and impervious, they're already at 60% impervious, which is way above our current standards, I think, if I'm not, if I'm not mistaken. So I mean, it's already, you know, cutting, cutting 1% impervious out of this to the tune of five grand, whatever it's gonna take to sock up the driveway, finish the edge again, finish the sod, finish everything else, like, what's the environmental impact of that? And so I just, I, for two and a half feet on both sides of the garage for it to just kind of ruin the character of that, I just, I'm not inclined to, to, to turn the variance down on this, although I, in, in most situations, like I said, I just, I think that, I think the stormwater is important, but this situation, it's like, there's nowhere to put the stormwater, the slope is too steep, it's just, it just seems like we're kind of, you know, I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote for variance, so that's just kind of where I'm at. Thank you.
This is Chair Kwam, and I'm gonna take a pretty unpopular position here, and, but I want, but this isn't about being popular, and I read this, all the pages of this report really carefully, and going back to, we had this contractor before us last April, I think, from, what was the, from the contracting company, and the Richfields Administrative Review Committee put a bunch of work into this, and showed the applicant's surveying company, and the, you know, which I imagine the, the applicant homeowner, they are hiring these people, they have to take some responsibility because otherwise, so anyways, so Richfields, they, they gave Richfield, which was page 10 in our packet, they gave Richfield a survey drawing showing the 25-foot-wide driveway. Richfield was really specific, if I understand this correctly, sent it back to them, said you need a new survey that shows the setback, and that complies with the 20-foot-wide maximum, really clear as a bell, and, and then they came back, the surveyor did it again last July, and, or July 3rd of, yeah, of this year, with the, with the plat, with the survey in compliance with what the city asked for, so they, they shrunk it, right? And it was 20 feet wide, and then suddenly it's poured at 25 feet, I don't think that's fair to what we're doing here, and, and I believe you're wonderful people, and it sounds like a great neighborhood, but that, I mean, it's, it, it isn't, it isn't fair to the process or to staff or to the effort that we put into trying to make this work for everyone, and the idea of just the driveway being too big now, and, you know, just because, I don't know that how it could be argued to be an oversight, and I don't want to accuse anybody of saying, you know, but I don't know how it was an oversight to the people that poured it when there was all this back and forth with the Administrative Review Committee, which is in our packet, really clears a bell, that's all. All right, Commissioner Rosenberg, and then Commissioner Rudolph.
A few minutes ago, I heard something about some water issues, another neighbor, would staff kind of give a little more detail on that? Is, was there some issues with water in the neighborhood, and I've heard some issues with stormwater, and I, I didn't see that in the packet, so is there some neighborhood issues with water? Nellie?
I have not heard of any current issues with water. I think in general, stormwater is, is, you know, related to too much pavement, but yeah, I haven't heard anything.
Okay. All right, Melissa, and then Commissioner Rudolph.
I believe, I'm sorry. My dog. I believe that Commissioner Rosenberg was referring to the comment that was submitted.
Commissioner Rudolph?
So I would like to take this time to, you know, talk about, yeah, I drove by the property, and I was able to look at it, you know, having done my own driveway, my own house, you know, make, see where mistakes can happen, you know, and I, I thought it was completely aligned with the character of the neighborhood, actually looked, looked beautiful, you know, having done, you know, all of you are aware that, you know, I built my own house, you know, I, you know, I had the opportunity to make a mistake of ordering trusses four inches too short when I built my second floor. Mistakes do happen. I think that this is completely in line with the character of the home, you know, it's no further wider than the curb cut of the driveway, of, if you look where the curb cut goes out, and it, I think it would be an undue look if we, we may, we did not approve this. I, I think it goes through answering all five questions properly, and that we should allow for this variation. Having seen mistakes can happen, I don't think it was to the default of the Kristnicks, you know, what, you know, you know, things happen, you know, in construction of homes in properties, and I think it, it would be a mistake for us not to approve this. Thank you.
Commissioner Lavin?
Yeah, I just want to, I just want to address some of the, the comments made by Commissioner McQuam, and I, and I agree with you that we need a process, and these codes are there for a reason, to, to keep harmony in the neighborhood in terms of construction and look, and that, but there's a committee like this that's there to make judgments on reasonableness, and I think it would be unfair and punitive to make the homeowners do the remediation necessary from a simple mistake that happened with their contractor, when you take a look overall with what, what is there, and it really isn't obtrusive, and it isn't something that will cause any type of, of property value deterioration or the neighborhood. I mean, for us as a city, to say that you have to do this, I think is, is, is too punitive, and is, is really unfortunate if that's, if that's the way this commission goes.
Mr., or Mr. Renato?
Yes, so I don't know if it's okay to make a comment, I think there was a comment about the water drainage, so I wanted to address that, if that's okay?
Go ahead.
So as, when we were building the house, we knew that we were, you know, that we had a slope, and we're higher at property level than the house to the west of us, right, the 2101. So what we actually did, and it's very visible if you come visit the property, we actually put a trench in between the two properties that takes the water from each side and drives it down to the, to the side, to the street. So we took that into consideration during the build-out. Sorry, now we have a dog. So, so that's what, that's what we did in order to take, take care of the water, potentially an issue going into the neighbors area.
Anyone else? Anyone else? Commissioner Hayford O'Leary.
I'm just, you know, I'm reflecting and I realize not the whole commission was here when we had the, um, Pillsbury Avenue Garage variance. It was a very, I think in a lot of ways, similar situation where it was a variance applied for after the fact. Um, there was a history of staff reaching out to the applicant in advance and informing them that what they were doing was not allowed. And we saw that situation a lot less charitably and we voted to deny that variance, even at the point of a significant expense of either retro, I don't know what happened exactly, either removal or significant change of the structure. And I guess I'm just not clear why we're seeing this one as so much more reasonable when in fact it's much easier for them to correct and bring it into compliance. When it's the same story, pretty much there, there's no reason it has to be this way. Um, it, it isn't, it isn't that big of a deal. I, I get that and I, I understand the aesthetic point and it, it is a lovely project. But we really shouldn't be considering that. We should be considering, is there a practical difficulty that requires it to be that way? And I can't tell that there is. We have this, we have this history. I just, I'm really struggling with that. But I would ask those of us who are here for that garage thing to think, why is this different?
Commissioner Levin.
To Commissioner O'Leary's comments, again, I go back and say every situation is different. And it's incumbent upon us as a commission to apply these variances and apply logic to each situation differently. Uh, I don't, I wasn't on the Pillsbury, uh, commission at the time that those variances happened. I don't know what the impact was. Um, but to say that we have to deny this because we denied that, I think is folly. I think that's just stupid government. You have to be able to say, let's look at the situation. Let's look how this is, how this occurred. Uh, what the end result is and what it would take for the homeowners to remediate it and make a decision and say, you know, how can we be reasonable about this? And how can we be, uh, the best government we can for Richfield and encourage these types of homeowners to stay, develop? Um, and I, I, I don't, I don't really think that precedent needs to be set in one sense to another, because each situation is different. And if, if, if we can't see that, then I think that we're in trouble.
I, I have a question. Uh, this is Chair Quam. Commissioner Levin, you've said this a couple of times and so I have a question for you. And what do you think about looking at, you know, all the paperwork back and forth when they then did comply? On, you know, with what the city asked for, they reduced it to 20 feet and then now are asking for a variance after changing it. I mean, how do we address that? And you're quite adamant about it.
Well, I think that's a mistake by the developer and I think that that's unfortunate mistake by the developer. But we as a commission, we need to sit back and say, what's here now? What happened? I mean, this isn't a couple that, that tried to overtly skewer or go around some sort of variance and try and do this under, under the radar. This was a mistake that happened. Okay, that's what happened. The developer made a mistake. And so if we are a commission, I'm going to be so vindictive and so punitive to say that now you gotta go and tear up this driveway where everybody in the neighborhood says, hey, it looks great. There's nothing really wrong with it. Then I think that that's, I think that's a mistake. And I think that everyone that votes to say that you have to go do that, should really think about what we're trying to do in Richfield from a comprehensive plan and, and what these codes really mean. Because we as a commission need to start really looking at individual projects and individual situations and making those calls based on those facts. And not just by saying, because this happened 30 years ago and this happened 20 years ago and there's completely apples and oranges to say that we have to follow those rules. Anybody that's gone and looked at that property, anyone that took the time to go over and look at that property is not going to be able to say that it doesn't make sense to stay.
Commissioner Sturza.
Um, I guess I was plenty on doing more listening, but after that, I feel like I wanna, uh, kind of just a little bit with, uh, new eyes. And, um, I did have a chance to look at the neighborhood, um, drive by and look at it. And I'm looking at a staff report that says that five things need to be met in order to approve a variance. And I'm not seeing that this does that. It's not because it's vindictive. I have, it looked like a lovely home. It sounds like a lovely neighborhood. But I'm looking at something that says five things need to be met and I'm not seeing that. Um, so I would take some of the, um, things we're pointing out of the conversation and look at the staff report and defer to that. And I'm not as a, um, as someone, so albeit I don't have the experience of other commissioners and I'm looking at this and I'm saying, it just doesn't seem to meet, um, what I'm reading as necessary to grant this very.
Commissioner Rosenberg, you had your hand up and then you took it down.
Yes, um, just a co- couple of comments on Commissioner Levin. You know, as a planning commissioner, we don't have the leverage to as much as like city council members. And this, this is a lesson I've had to learn as a, as a planning commissioner versus a city council member. We, we are bound by certain rules and Commissioner Quam is correct, and so is, um, the other members that I have heard, that we have to adhere to these, to these, um, rules of, of, uh, usage. And if we don't have them, why even, if we don't adhere to them, why even have them? And I agree with Commissioner Quam. As much as I, I drove by the house too and yeah, it's pretty and it looks nice. But we are bound by these rules and if they don't work for us and we want to make, make changes, then, then we have to do that in other formats. We can't just go in and say, well, because it's, it's only five feet, then we really can't do anything about that. We just, we'll just let them go. Well, I think these rules are made for a reason and we have to adhere to those as planning commissioners. I'm going to support the denial because, and I'm not vindictive and I'm not trying to be nasty. I'm just trying to do, fulfill what I perceive as my job as a planning commissioner. And that is that to fulfill and adhere to the variances and adhere to the rules of the community.
Commissioner Levin.
I will say that, I mean, as a commission, we do have the option to push back on city government and say the presentation that they made in regards to those five points, as Pat Elliott pointed out, aren't necessarily, um, set in stone. That's not the only position that they, that's out there. Uh, this was not, this was not brought upon by the, by the homeowners. This was a mistake that was done by the developer. Um, now we're sitting in a situation on how to remediate that. Um, so just to say that we're sitting here and whatever the city presents is how we have to take it. And, you know, we, we have to accept that for fact. Um, I don't think we're doing our jobs. Uh, I think we need to be a little bit more resourceful and a little bit more thoughtful.
Commissioner Hayford O'Leary.
Uh, just in response to that last point by Commissioner Levin, I agree, of course, we can disagree with the, with staff's points. Um, I think there, there's maybe an argument to maybe that there's a practical difficulty of just the aesthetics of it not matching the width of the garage, I guess. But I really want us to try to be deliberate about still doing it within these points and not just substituting our aesthetic judgment of what looks good in the neighborhood. Cause we, we have to have some way to be fair to everyone and relying on these five points and working through these five points, to me is the only fair way to do that. So if we're prepared to approve this variance, I want us to have a clear explanation for why it does meet each of those points.
Mr. Kruznak.
It's actually, uh, our neighbor, Andy Taylor, who called in earlier today. I think, uh, he came by, uh, feeling that, that some of the comments that he made as just during the call in were maybe not correctly voiced. Uh, so can we, can we have him, uh, make his point in regards to the, the watershed conversation that was, that was had?
Yes, and I'm going to ask Melissa you for your help here as far as, um, do we have call, are we expecting callers for this issue? And should I at some point open it up for people to call in?
Yes, Chair Quam, you should officially open the public hearing at some point. I know we took, uh, Pat Elliott's comments outside of that. But you should open the public hearing and that would be the appropriate time for this neighbor to provide his, um, his comments.
Yeah, he's on the call, he's on the, on the, um, on the line. So great. Go back to me.
Okay, at this time, we will open the public hearing for anyone who wants to call in. Again, the number 612-861-0651. Um, do we have a caller on the line right now?
Chair Quam, I would say that if the caller is in Mr. Kruznak's home and it's easier to provide input that way, that, that might be simpler.
Yeah, I didn't realize he was in his home and, um, actually, um, thank you. Nellie, I need to see the full screen. I'm sorry. Can we take that down just so I can see who's raising their hand? Thank you. All right, um, so with the participant, um, behind, yeah, Mr. Kruznak, would you like to tell us your name, your address and share on this topic? Um, and I'll, and I'll, I will cut in if you get near five minutes, but go ahead.
Sure, we're not gonna, we're not gonna approach the five minutes. My name, my name is Andy Taylor. We just purchased the house, uh, directly behind the Chrisnicks, uh, 2101 Forest Drive. Um, uh, we, we also wanted to make sure that the entire comments were read. Uh, I don't believe that the last line was read, uh, during the, the hearing here. And I'll just make sure that I say it correctly. But, uh, we don't wish for the neighbors to, to have to take the driveway out. Now, I, I know that you have processes and what you're doing to approve this, but that's not our intent. And I think maybe Commissioner, uh, Rudolph had asked about the watershed issue. That was actually just us saying, we clarify, wanted to clarify that being that we just moved in, we literally closed in this house two weeks ago. Um, our only concern is going through a winter, uh, the drainage issue of water. Uh, we don't know where it stands today. Uh, obviously with it being, uh, finished on March 2020, uh, which is just a few months ago. I don't think anybody really can tell at this point in time. So I don't know what the, the solution would be at this point in time, but we're looking to just make sure, um, that, you know, if there's any future concerns, that we address that today. Uh, but we're certainly not advocating that they rip off their driveway.
Thank you and welcome to the neighborhood there.
Thank, thank you. And I will add that we've lived here for 20 years in Richfield, so we appreciate the process. Um, it's something that, uh, you know, we take a lot of pride. We, there's a lot of different opportunities to move other places. Um, and we wanted to stay here in Richfield and we're extremely excited to be a part of this neighborhood. So thank you for taking the time and, and hearing my comments.
Thank you. Okay, back to technical difficulties. Is there a way to get, um, the screen share down? Staff? There we go. Thank you.
Sorry, I've never shared my screen before, so I.
I know, I realize that. Yeah, thank you for doing that too. All right, so it looks like we have another caller. Um, caller, can you hear me?
I can.
Okay, could you say your name and address?
Yep, once again, it's Pat Elliott, once again, 6720 Oliver Avenue South. And I'm calling back in, uh, thank you for allowing me to do it a second time. I just need to make a couple of comments. Uh, I too, uh, was participant in the city government during the Pillsbury event. And the thing that, that Commissioner Hoferd O'Leary failed to recognize or failed to mention is that was a blatant disregard of the, of the city's directors and orders. This wasn't a one-time occasion. It was multiple occasions where he ignored the city's mandates and everything else. That's why we took a hard line and he was forced to take it down and rebuild it within the confines of what the city had told him he had to do in the first place. So I think my recollection is there may have been four or five different iterations. Uh, the city, the city inspector's showing up, telling him, you're outside that, you can't do it. And he blatantly disregarded that and challenged the city to see what they're going to do. So this, this cir- this circumstances doesn't even approach the, 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 uh, the status of that other one. And so, so I think that to use that as an example basically is, is improper and doesn't present the, the correct facts. Um, and at least in terms of, of the planning commission having a mandate and a direction, that's a hundred percent correct. But historically, at least in the 10 or 12 years I was involved with city government, flexibility was always a key. Flexibility is how a city properly treats its citizens, particularly those that move back in, want to reinvest in it and make a home and, and raise their families here. So, so if you're going to just throw flexibility aside, you might as well just live in a planned community that everything looks the same and nothing changes. So, so use your, use your intelligence, use your observations and use the flexibility that's afforded to you and take a look at this situation in the proper light and, and allow the variance. Thank you very much.
I don't know who was first, um, Commissioner Rudolph and then Commissioner Levin. You're, you're muted, Commissioner Rudolph.
So I've been looking at the five questions that we have, uh, before us in we need to answer for a, for a variance. And, you know, I, you know, I've had the affordability to do a bit of my own construction over the years. And, uh, you know, I've done a bit of concrete work in that work as well. And, you know, taking a look at the property, you know, I, I do believe that there is a, um, you know, a detriment to, you know, trying to just cut concrete, uh, with the saws, you know, and pulling two and a half feet of I have pretty good, you know, and I, I think you're going to ruin that driveway if you do take that two and a half feet out of each side. And, and most likely need to repour it, you know, and it would be a shame to see that driveway, you know, ruined by that, by not taking a little common sense that we have the affordability of, of using. Um, you know, I don't believe that the Chrisnicks did this intentionally. I, I do believe it was, you know, for question number two, I do believe that the developer created this undue burden, not the Chrisnicks, you know, in, in. Three, I do not think it would alter the character of, of the neighborhood. I think, you know, you look at this house, you drive by the house in neighborhood and I walked around it this afternoon. You know, it's, it's very beautiful, you know, I, you know, and if we look at number four, the difficulty to remove, the, a two and a half foot cut isn't as easy as it sounds, you know, um. And I, I, I think it would be, I think we can answer all of the questions and with our own conscious and say that we need to approve this. I think if we had a developer, um, coming up with us, to us for variance, um, it would be a, a shoe-in. Um, we have had developers come to us after the fact for, uh, changes into development plan where we didn't have, there was so far into the process that we didn't even have the opportunity. It would have ruined Richfield to say no. Um, I, I think this is an easy one to say yes to, and I think that's what we should do. I'm done.
Before we go on, Commissioners, um, I want to ask if there's any, if there are any other callers, otherwise we'll close the public hearing. I don't believe there are. Last call. Okay, so do we have a motion to close the public hearing, then we can discuss it further if we want? Commissioner Rudolph?
I would like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second?
So, Commissioner Pan.
Thank you. Any discussion on closing the public hearing? All right, Nellie, would you take role?
Yes, thank you. Chair Quam?
Aye.
Commissioner Hayford O'Leary?
Aye.
Commissioner Levin?
Aye.
Commissioner?
Aye.
Commissioner Rosenberg?
Aye.
Commissioner Rudolph?
Aye.
And Commissioner Sturza?
Aye.
All ayes, the ayes have it and the motion passes.
Thanks, Nellie. All right, now back to discussion. Commissioner Hayford O'Leary.
I just wanted to ask a question reflecting on the comments that, uh, Mr. Elliott made. Uh, for staff, is, is it, is the applicant's intent relevant or their history of, um, correspondence or awareness of the situation is that relevant to what we should be considering? And I ask that, my understanding is that it isn't relevant because it's not one of the criteria we're asked to consider. But staff do seem to include that, both in this and the different, but other variant situation that I've mentioned, sort of demonstrating that the applicant knew about it in advance. Is that something we should consider?
Um, I, I don't think the intent of the applicant is considered anywhere, um, but, uh, they were notified multiple times, um, in 2019. So I, I don't know if that's relevant. I felt it was relevant, so.
Okay.
Commissioner Levin and Melissa, did you have your response for that question? Do you, okay.
I have some general clarifying, um, things to add, but I can wait until after Commissioner Levin.
Commissioner Levin.
Oh, I just, you know, I, you know, Oh, I just, you know, as we're winding down in our comments, I think you know where I stand. And again, I think, you know, Pat Elliott said it more eloquently than I can, but, you know, please be it known that this commission has flexibility. And we are incumbent upon making decisions that are best for the situation and not tied to precedent. So, you know, keep that in mind. Keep in mind the situation that's in hand, that everyone around this property is for keeping the driveway, that the mistake was not made by the homeowners. And I think if you use that judgment, you'll agree with me that we should be granting this variance. Thank you.
Melissa, would you go ahead?
Thank you, Chair Kwam. I just wanted to add a couple of things to make sure that everybody is clear on what are Richfield rules and what are state rules. So rules regarding whether or not you can grant a variance, those five criteria that are included in your staff report, those are state statute. They come right from the legislature. Those are the things that we consider. You're absolutely right. You are the one who gets to decide whether or not those criteria are met, but those are state statutes. The driveway ordinance that says how wide a driveway can be, that is a city ordinance. That is a rule that Richfield codes put in place. In general, if we think a rule does not fit the community, then we go back and amend the ordinances. We change at a local level those rules to fit what we think is happening in the community. It's an ordinance change because it should apply to all properties of a certain character. For a variance, you're looking for something unique on a property that makes this reasonable. Something like a triangular lot, for instance, is a good example. So I did want to just clarify, what is state law and what are Richfield rules?
Thank you. Commissioner Sturza, did you have a hand up? Go ahead.
Yeah, I had a question. I noted in the staff report that it said, and I'm just trying to find it right now, that the variance cannot be requested if it was created by the applicant. And I'm wondering, in this situation, is a developer acting on behalf of a homeowner, is that developer considered the applicant in this situation? Or is the homeowner supposed to be considered separately than the person who filed the, or like who did the work?
Commissioner Sturza, the homeowner is ultimately the applicant. They are required to sign off on any application, and any variance application is filed on their property. It is not filed with the contractor. It is something that stays with that property and is therefore the responsibility of that property owner.
But I guess I didn't get that question very clearly. Since the contractor is acting on the applicant's behalf, could it be argued that this is a situation of creation by the applicant?
I would tell you that that's the way staff interpreted it, is that the applicant and homeowner, the contractor is applying on behalf of the homeowner and is an arm of the homeowner. That is the way we interpreted it. Again, this is an area that if you interpreted that differently, this is a finding that you could make.
Mr. Krasnick?
Yeah, just to add to that, I think this was very much driven by our contractor. I don't think, there was a comment made that there was some back and forth conversations with the contractor in 2019 about driveway. We were not aware of any of those conversations. I just want to clear that this was all between the city and the contractor. So I think for us going forward, it sounds like we need to be more involved in these kind of conversations when it comes to permits. So we'll take that for future work that we do on the house. But I truly, we're not aware of that conversation between the city and the contractor.
Commissioner Rudolph, and then I'm hoping we can soon wrap this up. I think, you know, people are kind of making their, made their opinions pretty clear to me. So go ahead, Commissioner Rudolph.
You know, and I would like to say that, you know, I think, you know, for those of us that have worked with contractors and developers, you know, sometimes it's a, I will agree that it's a scary thing to navigate and that you do rely on their expertise. You do rely on, you know, them knowing, when you're not a builder, you may not know all of the ins and outs of the things that, you know, need to happen. And, you know, I would also, you know, I guess I would like to make a resolution, you know, if we're done to approve a variance for a driveway wider than the allowed maximum at 2015 Forest Drive.
All right, commissioners, okay. Go ahead. Second?
I'm sorry, just to clarify, Commissioner Rudolph, were you making a motion to approve the variance?
Yes.
Okay, I would second that motion.
Discussion?
Commissioner? I would add that if you are going, planning to support the variance, you'll need to explicitly make those findings required. So someone will need to articulate all of those findings so that they can be put in a resolution. And ultimately, that resolution would be brought back to you next time.
Wait, wait, wait. I don't, since, so, you know, I believe that, you know, so you're saying we need to bring that in a resolution as part of our resolution, our findings?
Yes, that's correct. You have to take these
I don't remember us doing this with any of our resolutions, whether or not we are for something or against something, as this is usually just a recommendation, if I'm correct.
Commissioner Rudolph, if any commissioner makes a final decision on variances, this is the final decision that you're being asked to make. If you would like to make a resolution or like to recommend approval of a resolution different than the one that staff has provided to you, you will need to make the five findings so that we, staff, can draft a new resolution for you to approve next meeting. Is that all clear?
So here's a question for staff then. If we use the resolution that you, to recommend denial, and we vote that down, then it is approved?
No. You still, in order to approve a variance, you must make the five findings required by state statute.
All right. Okay, so I've got these written down. I'd be more than happy to discuss them and talk them out. Do I need to state that in my resolution then?
I would recommend that you go through all five and very quickly and briefly say why you believe the criteria is met. Staff would draft a resolution if approved tonight and bring that back to you next month for approval.
Would you like to do that, Commissioner Rudolph?
Well, I'm just really confused here that, you know, the applicant has a, so here's the question. The applicant has a application for a variance, and that's what we're voting upon. Is this correct?
Commissioner Rudolph, you are voting on whether or not to approve the resolution that is before you. The resolution that is before you is a resolution to deny. You would like us to bring a different resolution back to you next month. I'm asking you to articulate the findings so that we can prepare that resolution.
This is Chair Kwam. Commissioner Rudolph, I think in the past, you know, so because the staff prepared this with the recommendation to deny it, they went through the five and said why to deny it. So if we want to be for it, we have to go, someone has to go through it and say why it should go through. So normally, they do all that. You have your lifting in the background, and then we kind of vote for it or against it. But now you're creating a new one, right?
Well, I would like to approve their variance request, is what I would like to do. And I think, you know, this is the first time I think I have heard in all of our work in the last three years that we need to have something come back to us if we don't, if we want to approve something. I guess I'm just a little bit frustrated.
Commissioner Penn?
Yeah, so if this were just, so if we're just to vote on the resolution as a stance, which is to deny the variance, and is that, is that the end of it? If they, okay, no, let me step back, I'm sorry. So if we, if this motion fails, which essentially means we don't want to deny it collectively, the majority says we don't want to deny it, then what would typically happen? Who is it incumbent upon to then make that argument if it wants to come back to us next time? Would that always fall back on the planning commissioners to make that argument the next time around?
I'm asking you to help staff because in staff's opinion, which is the resolution that we prepared, this does not meet the criteria. And so if the commission believes that it does, I am asking you to verbally articulate how you think it meets those criteria so that we can prepare an appropriate resolution for you to approve.
So, I'm sorry, can I just give clarification really quick? And would that mean every single one of those five criteria or only one of them has to hold?
All five have to be met to grant a variance.
All five, okay.
Can I take a shot at it? Jim, if you have some language? I've got the five things written down. Okay. You know, I, you know, let me take a shot at this. All right. Okay, so let's go to, I'd like to make my findings necessary in order to approve a variance as follows, subsection 54711.
Commissioner Rudolph?
Yes.
You don't need to do this in any formal way. What I'm asking you is just
Because I've got each one written down.
Okay.
It's only going to take me less than five minutes to do this. I've already been working through the whole thing as we've been sitting here working at. So question number one, there are practical difficulties that would prevent the property owner from using the property in a reasonable manner. Not looking at economic conditions. I do believe that taking the two and a half foot cutout of the driveway would be detrimental to not only the foundation of the driveway, but possibly of the garage and ruin the driveway. And it's not as easy as just pulling two and a half feet out to be compliant. Question number two, there are unusual, unique circumstances that apply to the property which were not created by the applicant and do not apply generally to other properties in the same zone or vicinity. I do believe that there is a line between applicant and developer when you hire someone to be the expert for you. I believe it was the developer that created this undue burden and not the applicant for the variance. Number three, the variance would not alter the character of the neighborhood or locality. I do believe that it would not, granting a variance to allow a wider driveway will not alter the character of the neighborhood as it is very beautiful and it does not go beyond the curb cut. The variance, number four, the variance is the minimum necessary to alleviate the practical difficulty. And there is, I don't see the practical difficulty in to be eliminated. You know, you know, it Number five, the variance is in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the ordinance and consistent with the comprehensive plan. I think at a minimum, it is in harmony with the comprehensive plan and the general purpose and intent of this ordinance. You know, things happen, mistakes happen in development. And for us to deny with your mistake, therefore, I would like to make a, based on my findings, I would like to make a resolution approving a variance for a driveway wider than the allowed maximum at 2015 Forest Drive.
All right. So
I second.
Excuse me, Commissioner Lavine, did that constitute a motion then? Are we ready for a second?
Yes, we are for a full second. That was started out with I am making this motion.
Okay, Commissioner Lavine, you second? All right, discussion? Mr. Lavine?
I do want to talk about the practical difficulties. And being over there, you know, just today, and the width of their, you know, garage as it is in the garage doors, pushing the width of the driveway in towards that garage space or the openings of the garage door, and not only, like Commissioner Rudolph said, I think would, you know, maybe dehance the stability of the driveway in some ways, but it also would push grass up next to the doors. And I don't think that that is ideal. So I think that there is some practical variances there.
I have a question for staff, this is Chair Kwam. So now that we have a motion, a different motion, and second, what happens to your, just your recommendation, just go to dormant? Or we don't vote on that, correct?
Chair Kwam, I don't know that this particular situation has come up before, but I think that the way that Commissioner Rudolph is handling it is probably fine. If people want to vote on his motion, they certainly can. If someone, and then if that motion is not approved, someone could move to, move staff's recommendation or something else.
All right, thank you for your help. Okay, so discussion on Commissioner Rudolph's motion? I think, any further discussion? Okay. So, Nellie, will you take role? Will you repeat the motion, Commissioner Rudolph?
My motion
Not the resolution?
I won't go back, I won't go back to the five questions that I already answered, but I'd like to make a motion, make a resolution to approve a variance for a driveway wider than the allowed maximum at 2015 Forest Drive.
Thank you. Okay, am I out of seconds? So Nellie, would you take role?
Yes, I will, thank you. Chair Kwam?
No.
Commissioner Hayford O'Leary?
No.
Commissioner Lavine?
Which one?
Commissioner Lavine?
Oh, aye, yes.
Commissioner Penn?
Aye.
Commissioner Rosenberg?
No.
Commissioner Rudolph?
Aye.
Commissioner Sturza?
Commissioner Sturza, is it?
She's muted. No.
Okay. There's four noes and three ayes, and the noes have it, and the motion fails.
Thank you, Nellie. All right, would someone like to make a motion? Another motion?
Can I make a motion?
Can I trick yourself?
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution as provided by staff.
Rosenberg, second.
Thank you. And everybody, please mute if you're not talking. Thank you. All right, discussion on that, further discussion on that? That was our original thing we were debating. Mr. Lavine?
I think a yes vote to deny the variance can't be seen as anything, especially with the conversation that we've had and the precedence of flexibility. It cannot be seen as anything more punitive from this committee, and I think it's an absolute mistake. You know, when you go back and you start thinking about what kind of community do we want to live in? What kind of people do we want to come into our community and build houses and stay in our community? And, you know, how do we, how do we build in poor neighborhoods? I think this sends a seriously distorted and almost mean message from the city and from this committee. It's unfortunate on many, many levels.
This is, this is Chair Kwam. I think we're all pretty, you know, feel strongly about this, but I just want to, I personally would, I don't appreciate adjectives like mean or lacking intelligence or we are all trying to do what we think is right. That's why we're on the planning commission. I just, I'd like us to not be quite so, so mean if we disagree.
My apologies if you take offense to that, but I, I don't see it any other way, and that's just how I feel.
All right, I'm not, Commissioner Sturza, I'm sorry, and then Commissioner Hayford. Okay, Commissioner Hayford O'Leary?
I just want to say, to second the chair's comments, I genuinely believe that this is a reasonable thing to debate. I am grateful to the applicant for putting this investment into this community. I was very back and forth on this during this discussion. I appreciated the discussion. I believe both sides are acting in good faith and made excellent points. But the bottom line is we're really line is we're, we're really struggling to articulate what the practical difficulties are. The closest thing I can come up with is that the garage is wide, but that the applicant ultimately chose to make the garage wide. I even think, you know, ultimately this R1 zoning, we could amend it to allow wider driveways in these really large slots, but we chose as a city not to, and we have an obligation to be fair to all property owners. That, that's our job here is only to consider these criteria and not to substitute our own judgment. And when I consider these criteria as objectively as I can, I think we need to deny the variance.
Commissioner Rudolph?
Yes, so, you know, looking at this, you know, we, we, a couple months ago, we had a, a variance that came before us on a development project over off Cross from Target where we were originally told that if all properties were not purchased, the development would come back to us for a reapproval. Well, if, if, if we, if we look back, the development proceeded and proceeded to build around a single family home that was not purchased. And we were brought back to reapprove a, this plan unit development to be consistent with the comprehensive plan in building around a single family home. And we all afforded a developer that opportunity where we're not affording a small residential house, even close to the opportunities, and I think it's a mistake not to make them redo this. If it was any, if it was a developer, it would be a plan unit development and there would be no zoning to be even considered.
Alright, okay, Ms. Krisnik?
I would just like to close with, I'm very respectful of this process and it's been really interesting to listen to. I've often said, as I move back to Richfield, that I'm going to be the mayor someday. So I'm super respectful of this process, this team of, this, this diverse team of people, and I love that as well. I'm looking at Richfield from a more visionary perspective, and yes, this will cost my family money to remove what I think is an unnecessary piece of our driveway. I mean, and, and I do have concerns. I'm actually more concerned about the structure that we invested in that is probably, you know, going to be compromised with this garage. I look back at the variance meeting we did last August and I look at my contractor and I would say, why didn't they ask for the variance on the driveway then? Like, someone should have had some kind of a safeguard to say this is not going to work in Richfield, and nobody did. And so we went ahead and we invested. And the other thing that I would say is when they came to look at the curb cut, why would they allow a curb cut without a driveway permit? Like, what, what was that? Like, where was the city to support us? It just feels really strange to hear this now. But my biggest message to this group really is, if I'm going to spend the money to take this garage out and potentially damage my home, I would so much, or my, my, my garage or whatever happens-
Driveway.
-driveway, I would so much rather put money into Richfield. Like, how could I donate to, you know, put the tennis courts together down at Fairwood? How could I create a team of people that might want to build a new park for kids? This just feels really, 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 really sad for me coming into Richfield. So I just wanted to share that because I'm super respectful and I want to help this community grow and be a part of it for many years, and it just feels like I want to do something instead of take away from something at this point. So that's my position as a homeowner.
Thank you. Are we ready for a vote? Alright, Nellie, would you take role on the motion?
Yes, thank you. Chair Kwam?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Leary?
Aye.
Commissioner Levin?
Absolutely not.
Commissioner Penn?
No.
Commissioner Rosenberg?
Yes, aye.
Commissioner Rudolph?
No.
Commissioner Sturza?
Aye.
Um, that is four ayes, the ayes have it and the motion passes.
Thank you, Nellie. Thank you for attending our meeting. Sorry it didn't turn out the way we hoped. Alright, we're going to move on on our agenda, we have another public hearing. So... Our second public hearing is to consider an amendment to approve final development plans for a mixed-use development at 10166 East. The proposed amendment reduces commercial space and increases the number of apartments in the project. Staff, we have your executive summary?
Yes, thank you, Chair Kwam, and I will let you know that I am having some technical connection issues, so if I drop off this call, I will call in on my phone to reconnect. In June 2018, the city council approved development plans for a mixed-use building with 6,000 square feet of commercial space and 31 apartments at 66th Street and First Avenue, now known as the ME. After a series of delays, PLH and Associates approached the city council and HRA earlier this year to discuss the possibility of amending those plans to reduce ground floor commercial space and provide affordable housing units instead. The council and HRA were generally supportive, and the developer is now proposing a development that includes 1,770 square feet of ground floor commercial and 42 apartments. The proposed development continues to provide a building that is responsive to the street, albeit this is primarily via walk-up units instead of commercial uses now. Exterior elevations have changed to accommodate the apartments, however, these changes are modest and continue to provide an attractive frontage on all sides of the building. The change from commercial space to residential significantly lowers parking requirements. Without a transit reduction and assuming a fairly intense commercial use such as a coffee shop, the development requires 61 spaces. With the permitted transit reduction, the required parking falls all the way to 55 spaces. The developer has not proposed a reduction in parking, and the current plans include 72 spaces. However, staff is recommending that the rear row of 12 spaces be landscaped and serve as a proof-of-parking area. A proof-of-parking area serves as space that could be converted to additional parking if needed. In the meantime, this area could be landscaped, providing additional opportunity for native plantings and reducing impervious surface, which is significantly better for the environment and the residents in the area. The maximum allowable parking per code is 67 spaces, so at a minimum, the developer should be asked to reduce to 67 spaces to meet code requirements. The proposed development remains in keeping with the framework, goals and policies of the comprehensive plan. I've listed a few of those in your staff report. A commitment to equitable opportunities for all. There isn't another multifamily housing development for approximately a quarter mile. It emphasizes sustainability. Maintain the appropriate mix of housing types in each neighborhood based on available amenities, transportation resources, and adjacent land uses. Promote development that broadens the tax base and encourage development of areas where vehicle use is minimized. Staff finds that, that the proposed amendment continues to meet the policies and intent of the comprehensive plan and code requirements for mixed-use developments and recommends approval. That's all for the staff report. We did receive several public comments about this proposal, and the developer also held a virtual open house. We've provided those comments to the commission in a document that was emailed to you today and also included on the website. I can summarize a few of those comments, but perhaps we'll open the public hearing and discussion before going to those.
Thank you. I see the developers on the line. Did you have anything to add, Mr. Lynch? At this time? Okay, any questions for staff before we open it up to the public lines? Staff, I have a que, Melissa, I have a question about, so because in June 2018, the city council approved the final development plans for the project, and then there were one or two extensions because of difficulties, um, that, you know, at the bottom of the alternative recommendations, it says existing approvals for a development with 6,000 square feet of commercial space and 31 dwelling units would remain in place. So regardless of the discussion tonight, that remains in place, right? So we're, is, I'm, I'm asking you to clarify, so we're only debating or, or talking about having a public hearing about changing that to have less commercial space and more residential, correct? It will still stand? We can't, we're not debating the structure, correct?
Yes, Chair Kwam, that is correct. The existing approvals will remain in place regardless, or if this is denied, the existing approvals would remain in place, and the developer would have the option to construct what was already approved.
Thank you. Commissioner Hafred O'Leary?
Just to ask a follow-up on the chair's question. Their approvals are set to expire, I think, at the end of the year or in December. Because I have to just clarify, because it has been a suggestion that from people who are dissatisfied with the project, that this should both be denied and the initial approvals were allowed to expire. Obviously, it's a different decision, it's a decision by the council, but if that happened, what, what happens then? Like, is it still zone mixed use? Could they, could he still build something as a right that's similar? Or would it be completely back to the drawing board and he would need anything to do anything?
Commissioner Hafred O'Leary, yes, if, if the plans were to remain in place and the developer was not able to construct the original proposal by the time of the expiration, the, his approvals would go away, but the property would remain guided for mixed use. So this is the type of development that the city council and planning commission has decided is appropriate here and is what we are looking for. So in that case, we would be waiting for another developer to come forward with a similar proposal, or for this applicant to reapply.
But this applicant also owns the property, right?
That's true, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Rudolph?
Yes, do we know what the parking ratio is that staff wants to go down to? Because, you know, it just seems to me that I'm not in agreement there, and I'm just wanting some more background information.
Commissioner Rudolph, we're applying the standard 1.25 per unit parking ratio. If we do that, the original development required 39 spaces for residential development. The current proposal would require 53 spaces dedicated to residential. However, the commercial would have required 28 spaces and now only requires eight. So the development is overparked any way you slice it.
So, so the question though is, so if we look at this, those standards that have been applied elsewhere in Richfield, I, I believe the standards actually are underserved. So, this, thank you though.
Okay, other questions for staff? Commissioner Levin?
Actually, this goes back to, I think, an earlier point made by Commissioner Kwam is, so like the, things like the parking, you know, using, setting aside 12 for, you know, impervious or pervious surfaces, eliminating those 12 spaces, that's already been decided through this commission and voted on, and it's not up, that's not a change, that's, that's being, that we're being asked to approve or, or even debate on. I just want to be clear on what, what the mo, or what the recommendation is.
Staff is saying that you recommend approval with the stipulation that those 12 spaces be removed. The developer did not propose to remove them, staff is recommending that. At a very minimum, staff is recommending that you have the developer comply with our parking maximums, which would require a reduction to 67 spaces. But staff's recommendation is to remove the entire row of 12, since they are above our minimums, and they would serve as proof-of-parking area if, if an issue developed, they'd be converted.
So that's, that's nothing from the developer's point of view, that's something that staff is asking the developer to do, based on staff's opinion. That's not a developer, that's not something the developer's asking to do.
Staff is-
Maybe they could ask the developer if he'd prefer to have those 12 spaces.
You certainly can.
Hello, this is Charles Bird, I'm working with Paul Lynch, the developer. I can just say that he definitely does not want to remove the, the parking spaces based on just having additional parking for the tenants and their guests, and then for a place to sometimes store snow in the winter.
Okay.
Mr. Levin?
I, I did, I did go buy the property today and I, I spoke to several neighbors, and you'll see in, in some of the feedback from the neighbors that, that parking, residential street parking and intrusion into residential streets has been an issue in Richfield. It's been an issue in recent projects that have been proposed to this committee. So I'm not sure exactly, and I don't want to piecemeal, and maybe we do need to piecemeal all these different caveats, but I, I'm not sure when you have a developer that's willing to put in additional parking spaces, with the recent feedback and the recent actual tangible evidence that we have that a lot of our newer multifamily projects are underparked, why city staff would recommend removing these 12, putting it in a garden, and then eventually possibly making the developer come back and convert it back to parking spaces if that doesn't work out? I would think the reverse would be true, where you would want to keep the parking spaces. If they're unneeded or unused, you would make a plan at that point to convert it into some green space. And I think there was another caveat where we're trying to get the, the garbages in underground parking if there's enough room. I, I think keeping the 12 spaces would, would help in, to, to, to maybe achieve that goal. So I'm really, I'm curious why staff has gone to lengths to reduce parking spaces when they have all the feedback and all the tangible evidence that's gone on with our multifamily projects lately, to require a developer to do that.
Commissioner Levin, the proposed parking is 17 spaces above the minimum. That's approximately 130% of the required parking. That's a lot of parking, it's a lot of parking that be, could be converted to a more useful space. It contributes extra parking, contributes to climate change, it contributes to urban heat island effects, it makes it a less attractive property, it makes the development more expensive. There are a lot of reasons we try to right-size parking lots, those are just some of them.
I mean, if, if you recall, we, we were just lowered the variance, or lowered the, the limit on those just like a year ago. And, you know, the first ones out of the gate have come back with very negative feedback from residents. So I'm not sure that a 130 is even enough, and certainly based on, on, on what's happened, I, I would recommend that maybe it isn't sufficient. And why we would put more pressure on our residential streets when we don't need to seems to be, you know, is not really protecting the single-family neighborhoods. I'm not sure that the city is really having that in mind when they, when they make a recommendation like this. And, and just so everyone that's watching, when I say protecting the neighborhoods, I mean the intrusion of traffic and the intrusion of parking on the streets and the safety, the, the safety ramifications that those things both provide. So, I, I, again, you know, you say 130 is plenty of parking, well, I think there's a lot of people in this community that would say that's, that's not enough. And, and, you know, there's people on this commission that have evidence of, of, of multifamily projects that, that have parking ratios above that, and they're not enough. We have a developer in here on that 66 and, or Nicollet and 65th, that said they don't want to do a development less than 150 because in their experience, it causes turnover, you know, when people don't have enough parking in their parking lots. So, and again, yes.
To clarify, I'm saying that they are providing 130% of the required parking. I'm not provide, I'm not saying they're providing 1.3, I'm, I'm, I'm not sure what comparison you are making, but I-
What's the ratio at?
What's that?
What would the ratio be for residential parking?
It's over 1.25. The minimum-
Right, but what is it?
I, I don't, I have that calculation, I can do it right now, but I don't have it. The minimum allowed here would be 55. What we are proposing is 61, the maximum allowed is 67.
Mr. Hafred?
Uh, thank you, Chair. I just wanted- I just wanted to ask just a more specific question. The proof of parking process, they say if there's, if there's a problem with a lesser amount, that staff can make them do it. Is it as simple, or is this like, staff gets complaints from the neighbors, there's a bunch of cars parked on the street, you can just write a letter and they do it? Or like, what's the actual, what are the nuts and bolts of how we make that happen, if it does become a problem?
Sure. So, the staff would monitor the parking once the development was open, we would listen to comments from the neighborhood, we would do traffic studies in the area, generally we set out our cameras, we monitor speeds, we monitor, we put the cameras out and monitor how many people are parking on the streets. If there's an identified safety issue, then yes, that's the process for having the developer go back and add additional parking.
And then ultimately, that's a decision from staff, you've made this determination? Or does it go back to the planning commission or council to require it?
No, ultimately, staff could make the request that the developer would need to install that. If, if the developer did not want to, they would have to come back to the planning commission and city council and request that they not be required to put that in.
Okay. And then just to make a comment generally, to try to move this along, I, I think that since the developer wants more parking, the neighbor wants more parking, I see nothing wrong with allowing them the maximum, I don't see any reason to go above the maximum at this point, but I would, within the maximum, defer to their judgment when they want that and the neighborhood wants it. But I agree with slightly reducing the spaces to fit within the max.
This is Chair Quan, so any, like, any other questions? And then we're going to open up the public hearing, and then we can have tons of discussion if we want. Commissioner Rudolph, go ahead, and then after that, if there aren't other questions.
I, I can wait for the discussion on some of the points that I have.
Thank you, okay. Any other questions? Mr. Lynch? You're muted. Mr. Lynch, you're muted. You're muted.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we all do that, by the way, so...
All right, I'm also on the phone, so that's why.
You're muted again.
Okay, let's try that. Better?
Yeah.
Okay, so in an effort of, to compromise, I can understand Melissa's point, that if it, the maximum 67, we take five stalls away from the 12, I'm fine with that. I also understand that I want to be a good neighbor, and it, through the virtual open house that we had, we had several comments, I don't know what the percentage is, but several of them were talking about the parking. They don't want to see parking on the street, I don't want my, my tenants or my visitors to be parking on the street as well. So of the 12, if we were to reduce it down to seven, if you also look, I know you have the site plan, if you look at the site plan, there actually is water treatment underneath those stalls. So if we keep the seven stalls closest to the southeast corner of the property, right below that is these water treatment tanks, if you will, and there's also inlets there in the curbing, so that the water would get down in those tanks and not go out onto the street. So in an effort to compromise, if we could keep the seven stalls, and then for the five that Melissa proposes, that city staff proposes to take away, we do the proof of parking for those five down the road. If we have to add those to keep people within the property parking, then I'd be more than happy to revisit that and, and add those stalls.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I'd like to open up the public hearing for callers, or, we already read the comments, is that true, staff? Are there any comments from, for the public hearing that you need to read or you want to read to us before we open up to line callers?
Commissioner Quan, we've repeated all of the written comments to you, we did not receive any other comments.
Thank you. All right, so, Masuk, we have some caller on the line. Caller, are you there?
Yes.
Okay, I'm gonna, this is for, I'm sorry, I didn't say this before, this is for everyone who's waiting to speak, I'm gonna just remind you quickly, please mute your device that you're watching the meeting on, start by saying your name and address slowly. You have a maximum of five minutes, and if you have questions as well as concerns, staff will gather those and answer all of them after the last caller. So we're glad you're here, will you go ahead and start with your name and address, please?
Yes, thank you. My name is Ruwain Onesi Rosa, and my address is 2421 West 65th Street. I wanted to join into the discussion of the previous public hearing, when contractors are overstepping boundaries. In my neighborhood, a contractor is putting up a monstrous building, he has ignored his agreement with the city, he has, he promised, well, the city initially wanted him to have a 40-foot setback to the building, and then eventually they allowed him to have 25 to, 24 to, 25-foot setback. But if I look at that setback, it doesn't look like it's more than 12 feet today, so that was one thing that he didn't fulfill his agreement with the city. Secondly, the contractor was supposed to completely hide the parking underground, we now have a full story of parking overground. And when you're discussing contractors and the effects that the contractors have upon the neighborhood, I can't help but remind you that you did approve in the fall of 2018, against the pleadings of myself and my neighbors, we voiced strong opposition to plans to demolish our neighborhood. Today, we have building personnel rubbing shoulders with our preschoolers at Sheridan Elementary. The 12-hour days of constant noise, six days a week, tortures the very elderly, the paralyzed, the autistic, and those with Down Syndrome, many of whom are shut out, shut in as a result of the pandemic. These buildings are given free range to dominate the neighborhood and to go, these builders are given free range to dominate the neighborhood and to go unmasked, non-distancing, and untested in the midst of the city's most vulnerable populations. The probability is great that flagrant disregard of these builders, these builders exhibit for public health has already allowed them to spread COVID-19 throughout our community. At the February meeting in the year 2018, or in the February meetings of all the planning commissions, it is customary for commissioners to introduce themselves. In 2018, and I think this is done so that there might be some indication if there's a conflict of interest. Anyway, when the planning commissioners were introduced in February, they gave the names of their dogs, and that was all they gave, they gave no further information about their personal enterprises. I think this is fla, is a flaunted disrespect of the public's right to know by offering names of their pets, and only the names of their pets. This was the February meeting of 2018. At, at that meeting of the commission in 2018, Chair O'Leary commented upon the many, the many versions of the city's comprehensive plan that had come before him. Perhaps so many revisions were designed to accommodate the needs of a particular investor, not of any, not the other way around. It is very difficult to locate the senior-most executive attached to the ownership of Noble. Office assistants, volunteers, office assistants volunteer no numbers, names, and addresses of, of the most senior contracting authorities. Instead, we, we made our contracts with subcontractors.
Okay, could you, could you wrap it up? You have about 45 seconds, please.
If any tax dollars have been attached to the Noble project, and they have, it is my right to know exactly to whom these funds were allocated, and where these executives plant themselves. Thank you, I'll hang up now.
Thank you, caller. Great, we will wait for the next caller, and, I don't see the next, and I'm going to remind, I would like to remind, yeah, one moment caller. And then this is just a reminder to mute your devices, and also that this is a public hearing about 10166 Street East, so please limit your comments to that project unless it relates to two projects at once or something. All right, caller, are you there?
Yes, I am. Do you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes, welcome. And could you share your name and address, and then go ahead?
Yes, I can. My name is Kathleen Ballaban, and I live at 6526 Stevens Avenue. And I had my documentation ready, but I watched the first session, and I have to talk about what this apartment building now means to my neighborhood, because that is exactly what Commissioner Levin was talking about, okay? I did not have the pleasure of meeting him today. But if you would have went down on the north side of the street, you would have found five new homes. I moved in in 2017, I have already dropped over 28,000, and I know there, the people before me dropped a whole lot more, but that's not relevant. What I'm saying is, the people in my neighborhood right now, everybody's painting their houses, everybody's cleaning up. The people across the street dropped a good 60,000, the guy next door, I can't even tell you how much money he's put into his place. Today, he hasn't even finished. We are building your single-family home district, and things are changing in my neighborhood, and I am concerned. Nicollet is filthy, absolutely filthy. That roundabout, the traffic, it's unbelievable. All you have to do on any given day is look at the trash in the foliage. And we are building a multi-mixed-use apartment, and I have to slow down because now I'm switching, my head has to switch back. And what I'm looking at is our AMI, our average median income, that is supposed to help pay for things, and it also evaluates how much we're going to put in our rental properties. So how much is going to come out of my taxes? So going back to the real issue at, at the point that I need to make, is the ultimate lack of communication. If you look at the documentation, it says in, and I have it in front of me, "We did not have to tell anybody about it." I think it was under virtual open house, there you go. "City requirements do not require any notification." Now, when our city council approved it the first time in 2018, there was only so many apartments and so many parking spots. Now, they went to the Housing Redevelopment Association, and now I'm assuming that they are now going to be subsidized. They have now met the low-income, average median income apartment complexes, they've added more apartments to acquire financial assistance. But more importantly, nobody talked to us. Nobody talked to us. At no point in time were we included in this design, we were just presented with it. Now, our new managerial organization, in which I'm calling my new administration, my mayor, my city council, city manager, most of my council members are all new, and they're talking about inclusion and citizen representation. Where were they? The lady before me, she was talking about a different development. We need communication out of the city development department, and we need more of it, and not five days before the meeting. And now, every time that comes up, they're always pressed for time. Look at this, oh, you got to make a decision right here and now. It's always pressed for time, and they had all this time to present it, and now we're pressed for time, always. I think it's time for us to also think about what we're doing and how we're developing. I don't want a slump, I don't want to live in a slump. And it doesn't have to do with low-income housing, it has to do with how we manage our infrastructure all around those housings, okay? We don't want the traffic, I don't, right now, I'm only three houses down. You know, we put up little barriers on our driveways because people are turning around all the time now. I never had that before the roundabout. I can't even get through the intersection at time, at certain times of day, because there's no stops for us. And now we're going to add more traffic, and you're going to put people on my, on our city streets parking in front of my house all night long. I do not agree with that, and I don't agree with having changes without citizen input, and that's exactly what happened here. So I'm asking you to please turn this, turn this down, and, and they have to go back and do it right, and not only do it right, but he's a slumlord. I have been cleaning up his property personally, and I don't want that kind of an individual operating in my neighborhood. I've been picking up the trash. I live three houses down...
Excuse me, caller. Excuse me, caller. I'm sorry, Ms. Ballaban, you've almost reached your minutes, so if you could wrap it up real quickly, we'd appreciate it, thank you.
Well, ultimately, summary, we do not want this new design to be approved. It's less, it's less, I think I need to stop. Thank you very much for your time, especially for a long evening, thank you.
Thank you for your input. All right, moderator, we're ready for another caller. Hi, caller, are you there?
Yes.
Hi, go ahead and please state your name and your address, and then I will give you a reminder if you're at about four minutes to wrap up. Go ahead, we're glad you're here.
Are they done with the previous caller yet?
Yes.
Okay.
You can begin.
Yes. This is Julie Lipinski, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, Julie Lipinski, 61...
You might need to mute your device, Julie, there's some, please, some feedback in the background.
This is Julie Lipinski, 61, excuse me, 21 Stevens, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, go ahead.
Okay, okay, good. Thank you for having us for a public hearing. I just wanted to talk a little bit about some of the things people have already mentioned. Basically, you know, the history was not relevant anymore because the planned unit development was approved. Pardon me?
Go ahead, Julie.
Okay, the planned unit development was approved, so now there's been some modifications being presented to the plan. And I think, you know, it's kind of a theme I've heard this evening, is local family, single-family homeowners wanting to listen to, so I would kind of echo those concerns. One of the key things that you've heard about is traffic and also parking, and those are really two major things that could influence the neighborhood negatively or positively. The traffic that will be generated from such a large structure on such a small lot could have an outside undue adverse impact on the neighborhood, and especially with the proposal to cram more units into the small footprint of this building, over and above those added to the displaced commercial spaces. I'm not in favor of adding those additional units, it does make the project even worse than it already was, but I do see the reducing the commercial spaces a real positive. In addition, it is really unknown who the commercial tenant might be. Couple neighbors had a traffic study done by SPAC Consulting in 2018, and we learned that traffic would vary greatly depending on the specific type of commercial tenant in the building. Parking, as people have mentioned, may be insufficient to prevent spill over onto the adjacent streets, and I do think it's premature to reduce parking requirements for this development, and I'm absolutely not in favor of that. I've seen parked cars all over other apartments on residential streets, all over Richfield, I think others have seen that too, we just don't want that. It really reduces the quality of the neighborhood. And if neighbors don't want it, and the builder doesn't want it, why would we do that? Whose needs does that serve? Another thing I wondered about is, the underground trash was specified in the resolution as a goal, but how, if that space is taken for underground trash, which it should be if we have excess capacity on this site, that shouldn't be counted against any parking maximum. And then one concern I have is that, you know, the idea of building this green space sounds lovely, but if it's, there's not enough parking, it wouldn't achieve the goal of improving the neighborhood. We've not had good luck in getting improvements, for example, at the Lakes Buffet after the building was done, and so there's not a lot of confidence that that kind of a process would work for us, you know, in the future, if we need more parking. Finally, I think safety for pedestrians and children is really important, and there was supposed to have been a curb extension on the plans to prohibit turns onto 66 and to prohibit turns onto sixty-six and Stevens. And that curb extension is supposed to physically prohibit right turns. And as of the current plan, it does not. And then finally, the other concern is, there is a lot of specifications in the resolution about what should be done, how the neighbors should be worked with, and what the landscaping should be. And all of those things are very important. But I've not talked to anyone that has ever heard anything about the progress being made in those areas. So I think it's really critical that whatever specifications are in this resolution be followed and that the city has confidence and a mechanism to ensure that that does happen. So I'll conclude my comments now and just echo what was said previously. People have been making improvements in their homes. They'd like to continue to make investments. But they have concerns that some of these things need to be addressed to ensure that we retain the quality of our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you for your time and your input. Do we have another caller on the line? And Commissioner Penn, I'm wondering if you would welcome this caller and time now?
Hello, my name is Bruce Odell. I live at sixty-six sixteen Stevens. And I'm the homeowner on Stevens Avenue that adjoins the development. And by the way, this is a quick moment. I underestimated how long this would be. So I am calling from my car returning from a curbside pickup of my dinner. So I hope technically that you can all hear me. I wanted to say that this is not the project that we would have really ideally wanted. But we're dealing with the project that we have. And the project had several problematic aspects in the previous version that I think have been addressed in the current version from our perspective as the adjoining, one of the adjoining neighbors. We had raised an issue about landscape plantings and shielding of our yard from the parking lot. The revised plan and the landscaping of the revised plan. And the explicit inclusion of a snow storage area, I think have alleviated many of the concerns we originally had. So that's all a positive. I should also note, I was relieved to see the arborvitae hedge on the border between our two properties was going to be kept. We actually planted that twenty years ago on a mistaken assumption about where the property line was, based on an old fence from the nineteen fifties. Technically, those arborvitae's that we planted are a few inches inside of the adjoining property. So we're happy to see that those are going to be retained. And for the reasons that, you know, the improved landscaping, the parking is further from the edge of our lot and the ever use of evergreens for additional screening. This is not a, you know, it's not our first choice of development. The reduction in retail space as well. This is not our ideal choice for a development. But this is something in the revised plan that we, I think, can live with as next-door neighbors. And that's about all I have to say unless somebody had a question.
Sorry, actually, could I ask a quick question since this caller lives immediately south? Mr. Odell, this is Commissioner Hayford O'Leary. I was just curious if you have an opinion about that row of parking that staff asked to be removed since it would be either the parking or the green space next to your yard?
Yes, that's what I was going to say is, the parking area that, I wasn't sure where the back row of twelve, but that's the row that is in the parking held-in-reserve area. Obviously, we prefer to see that area maintained as a landscape space. That's, you know, one of the changes that made it, the traffic, or the parked cars are further away. If that area had to be redeveloped, obviously, you know, we would have to consider what impact that would have. And that would probably be based on, you know, the state of the landscaping in between. But obviously, we, you know, just speaking selfishly, I would be more, even though we have a garden in our front yard and would not, you know, like people parking there in front of our house. You know, we would have to trade off, could we put up with inconvenience for people parking occasionally versus having the parking lot enlarged? But I would, obviously, we would prefer to maintain that as a landscape space rather than as additional parking. Thank you. If there's any other questions, I know it's getting late. And I'm about to come home and unload my food. So unless there are other questions, I think that's about all I had to say.
Thank you, caller.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Quam, have you returned?
Yes, thank you. All right, do we have, I'm waiting for another caller unless the moderator tells me. Okay, so we have no more callers. Do we have a, I guess, first staff, would you please answer any questions that came up? And then we can close our public hearing after that?
Sure, Commissioner Quam, I made some notes. And I also made some notes from the comments that were submitted in writing. In general, I'll summarize that there were comments related to architectural design. There were several comments about not liking the design of the building. In terms of code requirements, the building meets all of those. It's high-quality materials with windows on all sides, with an attractive frontage along sixty-sixth Street as well as all of the other sides. We require equal facade treatment. I understand that some of the community members may not prefer this particular building's style. But in this case, it's often in the eye of the beholder. In terms of parking and traffic, the proposal tonight, we believe and we have seen, will significantly reduce both parking demands and traffic. Residential just generates a lot less traffic than commercial development will. So hopefully, that's something that in general is supported by the neighborhood. I think it is a little bit disappointing not to see more neighborhood commercial in this area. But in the era of COVID, I don't see developments with ground-floor commercial coming being very successful right now. We have been hearing that it's harder to get those projects financed. Ultimately, though, this does provide additional housing units of a style that is not available in this immediate area. Immediately access or immediately adjacent to high-quality transit, excellent bike access, all of these things that we want to develop multifamily housing near. So parking and traffic, I do believe that all of those concerns will go down with this revised proposal. There was a desire for some organic lawn care and native plantings and things like that. I think I'll leave that up to the developer to comment on that. Non-salt alternatives and other ecologically friendly practices. There was a desire not to reduce commercial space. I think I covered that. And then, yes, were there other specific things that anyone on the commission heard that I did not hit on?
I think you got them.
Okay.
All right, do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
Commissioner Penn, so moved.
And I'll second. Chair Quam, any discussion on closing the public hearing? Nellie, could you take a role on closing the public hearing?
Yes, thank you. Chair Quam.
Aye.
Commissioner Hayford O'Leary.
Aye.
Commissioner Levin.
Aye.
Commissioner Penn.
Aye.
Commissioner Rosenberg.
Aye.
Commissioner Rudolph. Commissioner Stersa.
Aye.
Commissioner Rudolph, are you there?
Aye, yeah.
All ayes, the ayes have it, and the motion passes.
All right, thank you. Okay, time for further discussion or questions from the commission. Commissioner Penn?
Thank you. I did have just a quick question for staff on this. You know, being that we've reduced commercial. And from what it seems like, there are some more affordable units as a result of the expansion of the number of units in there. I had a question, being mixed-use development, does there have to be, is there like a necessary commercial component that has to be a part of that? Or is it just the option of mixed use? I remember we had gone over this definition a couple of years back when this was recently changed. Can you clarify that?
Commissioner Penn, yes. When you are looking at the guiding districts, there's a mixed-use neighborhood, a mixed-use community, and a mixed-use regional district. And they all have different requirements. When we typically rezone to a planned mixed-use, we incorporate those units. The way that we did that in this one, for instance, was we allowed primarily commercial uses from mixed-use neighborhood with a few additions from mixed-use community. So that's a long answer to say, in this context, we blend the mixed-use developments. And that isn't a requirement. In the mixed-use neighborhood, there is not a requirement for there to be ground-floor commercial. Typically, in mixed-use community, there is.
Okay, and that's, I guess, that's getting to my, the reason I asked the question just for the sake of, is the commercial a necessary component? You know, just based on some of the feedback. I mean, some people were definitely in favor of the neighborhood commercial in light of how commercial is faring in the general area. I was curious, you know, would this be better off as entirely residential? But I guess that's not necessarily under purview right now. But I'm just, yeah, I'm just trying to fill in blanks here. So thank you.
Other discussion? Commissioner Hayford O'Leary and then Commissioner Rudolph.
Just to make a comment, I, you know, I think it's likely that this is going to be approved as is. I do want to say, and I've already, you know, asked Melissa about this in advance, I am very sympathetic to the neighborhood not wanting this development and then having it sit there for three years completely untouched. And the site looks terrible. So although it can't be part of our decision, from what I understand, I plead with Mr. Lynch that if this gets approved, please get this done. Because it is, it's tough to have the development that you don't want. It's even harder when it doesn't happen and the site is in really poor condition. So I really hope that if this goes through, this makes a difference. And this is able to be finished as soon as possible.
Commissioner Rudolph?
Yeah, I would like to confer with Commissioner Hayford O'Leary that this site is less than desirable looking right now. And, you know, if this does go through, please get it done and/or maintain that site. I don't think anybody should have to see a site with six feet of weeds growing consistently. The other thing that, you know, we've had many developments go through over the past few years. And the first one that actually went through where there was some parking considerations was, is actually in my backyard. And, you know, now we've getting through COVID. And I would like the parking to go through as requested from the developer. Because if I look at the requested development numbers for parking, the two developments right by my house. One is the apartment buildings near Cedar. And the other is the, what was it? Restaurant right on Sixteenth and Richfield Parkway as well. You know, we have many times where parking overflows into the streets, whether in the afternoon for lunchtime, parking lots are always full. And you fill up that street. Or on the weekends, in the evenings, you'll go drive by the area of Richfield Parkway, sixty-seventh and Seventeenth, sixty-eighth and Seventeenth, you know, things like that. They're full. And this is overflow parking from not enough parking in this apartment building. And so I would tend to agree that we would go, we should go above what the developer has requested for parking to make sure that there is adequate parking. Because, you know, I don't think that, you know, anyone on the city staff is going to be monitoring this in the long term.
Commissioner Levin?
Yes, my question is for staff. And I just am curious on what their thoughts are regarding the proposal that the developer has offered regarding those twelve spaces, maybe finding a compromise. I think, you know, the drainage concern that he brought up was probably something that we should consider. I'm just throwing it out there to understand if maybe that's something that we could pursue.
Commissioner Levin, yes, I don't think that removal of those twelve parking stalls is something that anyone should fall on their sword over. I do think that at least the development should be brought into compliance with our maximums. And I think that the developer has proposed a good option for that. The commission also brings up a good point with the trash and the possibility of moving the trash inside the building and whether or not there's a trade-off with those, some of those outdoor stalls. So I would say that I think that's a compromise to come down to that sixty-seven and then to work with the adjacent neighbor on which stalls would be most beneficial for them to get rid of, to eliminate as many headlights, bothersome headlights as we can facing that property.
I had a question. This is Chair Quam. Melissa, do we have a, can we add a, I don't know if this is something we can do. Can we add a condition if we approve this amendment saying that if there is another request for, if they need another extension? It would, you know, to close that hole of getting more extensions, I'm sure that won't happen. But because this has gone on for a couple of years and before that even by, for other reasons, can we add that as a condition that there won't be any extensions or it would have to come before us again or something like that?
Well, it's the city council that issues extensions. I think that you could make a recommendation that the city council not consider additional extensions. But ultimately, I believe that would be up to them.
Okay. Yeah, and I'm in favor of moving that garbage in. And I don't have a strong feeling about that parking because to me, that whatever is called permit for parking seemed like it was pretty easy to convert. But it sounds like the sixty-seven is a nice compromise. And lost my train of thought. Yeah, okay, anyone else? What about, this is Chair Quam again, what about a condition saying that if it, if the elevation or something like that changed, that there's a condition that that can't be changed before a recommendation from the planning commission again? So it doesn't end up being a lot bigger and we have no say in it after the fact? Can you give your thought on that, Melissa?
Sure, Chair Quam, I think that you could put in some sort of stipulation that there should be no more than a certain number of feet change in elevation without requiring a major amendment. You know, I would say that when development begins to happen, I think the case that that caller was talking about was an extreme case. In general, what you're going to see is possibly six inches as floors get installed and things like that. I don't think you're going to see a major change like what happened at the Novo project. And ultimately, at the Novo project, what happened was only a six-inch change. It just. But I do think that you could put in some sort of threshold.
Melissa, you cut out for a few seconds. It was kind of a critical part of your sentence. There was only a six-inch change at the Novo in what?
There was only a six-inch change. However, it did change the way that that building looked on that north side, which was unfortunate. I do think that you could put a stipulation in limiting the overall height of the building or the percentage change that could happen without a major amendment. You could recommend that.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Penn?
All right, can I elaborate on that? Because I don't know how far, I don't know how far we want to or can go with that. Just because I don't know if we have a clear understanding of like where staff kind of cuts that off when they, you know, because I feel like, to reiterate, like, yeah, a lot of the neighborhood around the Novo development, we're pretty burned by what happened there in terms of the changes and the, and serious cosmetic changes and functional changes to the building. I don't know about the setbacks that was mentioned in the call. I didn't recognize major changes and setbacks, but I didn't measure either. But at the same time, like. But at the same time, like, it's that, that can't happen again. But at the same time, I don't know how we, how we prescribe that in the planning commission meeting, and it seems more of just a basic city policy issue that needs to be addressed and clarified or codified or however we would do that. It just, I feel like it gets, you know, I feel like most of the developments have abided by something pretty fair in terms of like what staff feels like needs to come back for major revisions that need reapproval. I mean, is that correct, Melissa?
That's correct, Commissioner Penn. In general, what we tell a developer is that someone should look at these plans that were approved and think that that is the same as your building. Be noticeable to the naked eye, yes, we can consider those. But if the development is going to look significantly different, then you're going to have to go back. You know, the Novo project is a separate issue, and it's an unfortunate one. What happened on that particular side of the building? I do, I do think it was a mistake at the staff level, but one that I have not seen before.
Yeah, and I don't mean to bring that into this, but it just informs how we, how we structure this, you know? And so I just, but at the same time, like, I have, I have a hard time being overly restrictive in our resolutions where I'm hoping that staff have that good judgment, even though this Novo thing proved us that, that one didn't quite work out how we wanted it to, you know? And so I don't, anyway, I'm willing to entertain what you have, Commissioner Quan. I just, those are my reservations on that, so thank you.
This is Chair Quan. I agree, it would be nice if, but that's something I, that's not part of the planning commission. Maybe nice if there was some sort of, something written into code that if there was, say, like more than a, whatever, eight-inch elevation change or percentage change, it would automatically go back for public hearing or before the planning commission. I don't know what a reasonable amount is. I would like to add that on as a stipulation just because it was recently such a negative experience with the Novo that, but I mean, and there's no reason not to add it because, that I know of, unless somebody can tell me there is, to not add a stipulation that if this ME changes more than, more than, let's say, more than a 10-inch elevation that would require an amendment that would come before the planning commission and the city council. Any reason not to do that, anybody?
Chair Quan?
Yeah.
I, I will just kind of second Commissioner Penn's thoughts that it is difficult to figure out what the, that appropriate number is. I do think that 10 inches is probably fine, although I would want to talk to our building officials. That is certainly something that I can do prior to the city council meeting and let them know that you had these thoughts. I, I do worry a little bit about putting that particular number in right now because I don't know what it should be.
I understand, yeah, thank you. Other discussion? All right, would somebody like to make a, make a motion on this? Oh, sorry, Commissioner Penn?
That's okay. Just clarify from staff, if we want to make the motion to approve the, to cap the number of parking stalls at 67, is that, is that to the original motion, how does that proceed?
Sure, so we have done this several different ways. However, I do believe that you can make a motion, including the amendment. If that amendment, if that motion passes or is seconded, you can vote on it. If it fails, yes.
Okay, thank you.
As long as it's not, yeah, yes, I think you can.
Okay. Well, then, I, I'm just going to go ahead and make a motion to recommend approval, the attached resolution approving an amendment to the conditional use permit and final development plans for 10166 Street East with the condition that the number of stall, the number of parking stalls is limited to 67 instead of the proposed number.
Do we have a second?
Heyford O'Leary, second.
All right. Discussion?
I'm just hopeful that this, this brings things closer to what the neighbors want. I know it's, it's not a building that they want in a lot of ways, but I think the fact that it will reduce traffic, will reduce activity in the parking lot, it does seem like a step in the right direction if nothing else. And I think, given the fact that if we were to not approve it, the next, the immediate result would be that he could build the building that would generate more traffic, and even if that were to expire, he could still build a similar building because he owns the land and because it is a mixed-use piece of property. So I think, given those three routes, this is the one that would have the least impact on the neighborhood. And I think meeting them, meeting everyone in the middle with the parking makes a lot of sense. So I'm glad to support it.
Yeah, just a quick question I want to make because I'm writing down a lot of numbers, but that the amendment includes keeping seven of the 12 and converting five to green space, right? That's, when you say cap it at 67, that's what, that's what we're talking about. That's, that's, the numbers add up to that, right?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you. It's getting late.
Yeah. Other comments or questions or anything? Okay, I'm going to choose not to try to, well, I'm going to, I'm just going to think more about the things I brought up that I got staff's input on about recommending no more extensions because I'm just not ready to do that. So anyway, are we ready for a vote? All right, Nellie, will you take roll call?
Yes, I will.
Could you reread the motion with the change? Nellie?
I don't, I don't have the...
Chair Quan, I can reread the motion.
Thank you.
The motion is to approve the recommended action with a condition being that the number of parking stalls should be limited to 67 stalls.
Thank you. All right, could you take roll call, Nellie?
Yes, thanks. Chair Quan?
Aye.
Commissioner Hayford O'Leary?
Aye.
Commissioner Levin?
Aye.
Commissioner Penn?
Aye.
Commissioner Rosenberg?
Aye.
Commissioner Rudolph?
No.
Commissioner Sturza?
Aye.
There's six ayes, the ayes have it, and the motion passes.
Thank you. All right, that brings us to the next item on the agenda, liaison reports. Speaking of which, Commissioner Sturza, you might want to think about maybe having, taking on one of liaison positions. And we'll go through them, and they are first Community Services Advisory Commission. Do we have a liaison for that? I can't remember. I think we don't.
That would be me, I don't have a report.
Okay, thank you. City council?
No report.
Housing and redevelopment authority, no report. Richfield school board?
No report at this time.
Transportation commission?
No report.
And Chamber of Commerce is the one that is currently vacant, just to consider that. All right, thanks. Is there not a staff report tonight? I didn't see it on the agenda.
There's no report, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Rudolph?
Yeah, I corrected on the, the, my, my report for the advisor commission. Playgrounds are going in, Washington and Taff are complete, Madison is built tomorrow, and the Dog Park is nearly ready.
All right, thank you. We needed some good news. All right, anything else before we adjourn? Commissioner Matt?
Commissioner Quan, we, I don't know if this is appropriate to talk about this now, but we, there's that, and it kind of goes into the conversation we had about variances to projects after we approve them. I certainly think everyone here knows about that tree at Lunds that's subject to come down now, that was presented as being, keeping that in the, in the development when we looked at it. And I think everyone was happy about that stain. I think those plans have changed, and I'm not exactly certain if it's preference or if it's necessity, but my question is just a general. You know, it seems something as trivial, trivial as a tree, but it's a great tree. What, what, what is the demarcation line for bringing things back to this committee when, when things are changed after we've, you know, after we've approved them? You know, certainly, I don't know if a tree qualifies, but just as in general.
Commissioner Levin, the code sets out specific thresholds for minor amendments and major amendments. Generally, landscape changes are considered a minor amendment. I will say that we did go back and look at these plans as they were presented to the city council, and this tree was not included when the plans were proposed to the city council. I know initially, when the developer met with the community, their intent was to try to save that tree, and it proved, it did not prove possible with their plans, and the health of the tree is our understanding. So in this case, it did not constitute a change at all from what they proposed to the city council. So there was no need to bring it back anywhere or have a minor amendment.
Am I correct in my recollection that it was there, at least when we looked at it?
You know what, I did not back the planning commission ticket, so I don't...
Okay, all right, fair enough.
Commissioner Penn?
Not to drag this on any longer because it has been a long meeting, but you know, I am, you know, we had informally discussed the possibility of having planning commissioners and/or a council member being part of a kind of a new development kind of liaison team every time there's a new development of a substantial size. Like, you know, I'd spoken with the mayor about this in the past and other council members, and I don't think it's gotten any legs. And so I'm wondering what's the correct venue to somehow formalize this? Because like, I feel like it was really, you know, helpful in our neighborhood and helpful in other neighborhoods when somebody did have a continued presence to kind of explain like what we can and can't change at this point, you know, just be, you know, based on zoning regulations, you know? I don't know if you can speak to that at all, Melissa? So we can, I'd like to get that process rolling because I think it is really helpful.
Commissioner Penn, I'm sorry, I don't recall those conversations. But I would, I would love to talk to you about that and figure out what we can do.
So is there something that just like we just started at the staff level and then maybe it works its way up to just like a council resolution or something like that? I mean, how, how would that formally be?
Yes, why don't you and I start those discussions and then we'll figure out what to go next?
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, and once you get going, if you could, you know, let, share that with the rest of the commission, that would be helpful. And I was wondering if, where we could look, you know, just for all of our refresher or clarification, where is that in the code, the criteria for meeting a new? Do you know the number offhand or the title of the section, Melissa?
It's called administration. You'll look in the administration chapter of the zoning code. I believe it's 549. And then also, you would look in the planned unit development section. Each different type of development has criteria listed. Also, as a shortcut, you could look at our planning and zoning handouts. They're, they're often listed on there.
I'm talking about the criteria for when they'd have to come back to us, is that what?
Yes.
Okay. All right. All right, are we ready to adjourn? Appreciate everybody's hanging in there.
What's the date of the next meeting? Do we have that?
Thank you, yes. So our next meeting is October 26, 2020, at 7:00 PM, again on this video conference WebEx venue. And with that, if somebody would make a motion for adjournment?
So moved. Commissioner?
Heyford, second.
Thank you. All right, any discussion? Nellie, would you take roll call on adjournment?
Yes, thank you. Chair Quan?
Aye.
Commissioner Hayford O'Leary?
Aye.
Commissioner Levin?
Aye.
Commissioner Penn?
Aye.
Commissioner Rosenberg?
Aye.
Commissioner Rudolph?
Aye.
Commissioner Sturza?
Aye.
Of seven ayes, the ayes have it, and the motion passes.
All right, thank you. Thanks for everybody that attended the meeting tonight.